Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting of the Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If we'd all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is signed by the United States of America and to the Republic of which will stand one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
At this point in time, I'd like to introduce the members of the Commissions that are here this evening. To my far right is Jeff Kohan. To my immediate right is James Fitzsimmons. Both Commission members. To my left is Steve Allenson, who is an alternate on the Commission. At the table to my left is Cynthia Kleist, who is our Recording Secretary. And next to Cynthia is Casey Hand, our Town Planner. And I'm Jim Saitter, the Chairperson of this Commission. What I'd like to do now is ask for a motion to approve our minutes of our September 11th, 2017 meeting. And I'd ask for a motion or any corrections, additions to the minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move you approve the minutes of September 11th meeting as submitted.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Good. Before we get to the first item on our agenda, just a note, new business item number six, which is a site plan for Paradise Hills, a 12 windswept hill road. That application will not be heard this evening as it's, there's still some issues that need to be addressed on that application. So I suspect it may very well be heard at our November meeting. Which brings us to our first item, which is a public hearing. It's a special permit modification for airplane hangar for J Gavin at 108 Hanover Street, Meriden Markham Airport. And before the applicant comes forward to begin preparing for their presentation, Mr. Kohan, would you please read the legal notice and note all correspondence for the record?
Yes. Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing at their meeting on Wednesday, October 11, 2017, 7:00 p.m. in the Robert Parisi Council Chambers, Town Hall 45, South Main Street. Application 41017, special permit modification, garaging, hangaring of aircraft for Gavin Air LLC. Order is City of Meriden to construct a 3,844 square foot airplane hangar building in addition to 40 previously approved aircraft hangars not yet built at 108 Hanover Street, Wallingford portion of Meriden Markham Airport.
And if you'd also please note the correspondence.
Yes. And for correspondence, we have a letter from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, to Casey dated September 26, 2017. We have an interdepartmental referral from Ed Rizzo, Chief Engineer, dated October, date of receipt, October 11, date of submission, 9:15. Another interdepartmental referral dated 9:1517 from Erin O'Hair, Environmental Planner. A memo from Fire Marshal dated September 26, 2017 to Casey Castello. A interdepartmental referral dated 9:1517 from Fire Marshal. And a letter from Casey to Jonathan Gavin dated September 25, 2017. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kohan. If the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation. And if I just could please note for you that there's, as you can see, there's only four members for this Commission. Normally, we have five members. Obviously, for an application to be approved, we would need, you know, three positive votes. So I give you the option if you'd like to present your application this evening with four members here, or if you'd like to defer to the November meeting when there, hopefully, it would be five members. That's your option. So I just wanted to present you with that.
We're good to go?
Okay, good. So again, if the applicant would please introduce themselves and you can begin your presentation.
My name is John Gavin.
Mr. Gavin, could you turn the mic on and perhaps pull it a little closer to you, please? Thank you. Better? Okay. There you go.
My name is John Gavin. I'm the applicant that's asking to get the hangar built with, in conjunction with the Town of Meriden. I have, let Wilma introduce herself.
I'm Wilma Petro from the City of Meriden. I'm Director of Strategic Sourcing, and I'm in charge of the airport.
Robert Emmentaya, excuse me, Emmentaya, Engineer in Lancevera, Office of Design Development Group in Meriden.
Good, thank you. Can you begin your presentation, please?
Well, it's, it's right on the Wallingford line. It's a 62 square foot by 62 square foot hangar. Pretty straightforward. The only utility that will be run to it is electricity, no water, no sewer. There'll be no fuel storage in the hangar. There's a door that's westerly facing that will have two taxiways to get in and get out. You can see the arrows. There's a gate just to the south of it. There's, there's two access gates to the, on the hangar. There's a code key entry there. We met with the town officials, the fire officials from Meriden and Wallingford there, and they seemed content with the access. Fairly straightforward building. Nothing really fancier about it.
That's it?
Yeah, excuse me. I wish I had more, but it's, it's a, you know, it's really just a vanilla plain building.
Okay. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Kohan?
Yeah, just reading notes from our Town Planner. Are there any restrictions on this project, you know, proposed by the City of Meriden?
Restrictions, well, we can't do maintenance. So we, anything, we can't do anything in the hangar that competes with the city. So we can't, you know, we can't have a flight instruction just basically for storage of aircraft. So, no, I don't think there's anything else that's major that we can't do.
Anyone else? Mr. Simmons?
Just a couple of questions. So you're not performing maintenance in the hangar? So strictly for storage?
Correct.
And at any given point, you know, when it's fully functional, you know, how many aircraft do you think could be stored there nightly? What's the capacity?
Well, depends on the size of the airplane. But air, two to three at most. You know, beyond that, you can't just fit anymore in there. And even then, you'd have to stuff them in there.
All right. And then regarding utilities, would there be any type of fire suppression or it's a straight electrical only in the building?
Straight electrical.
Okay. Would there be an office in the building or strictly just a big hangar?
Just big hangar, big door. Just the only electrical would be to run the, the door and run the lights.
All right. Something you had said during your presentation, I was going to ask you, you said there'd be no fuel storage in the hangar. Is it near the hangar? Will there be fuel storage near the side of the hangar? Or is the fuel storage to remain where it is at the airport? And there's no plans for it on this, as part of this?
There is no, there's, we have 100 square foot land lease through the town. There'd be, I don't believe, any storage of fuel south on the Wallingford side. So the answer to your question, yes, there's no, no proposal, other than what's in the wings of the airplane.
Right. And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just to confirm, because according to our notes, the hangars were approved, I guess, was it back in 2006?
Yeah.
Right? So roughly 11 years ago. And at that point, one of the conditions was there'd be no helicopter or rotor wing stored or certainly on the Wallingford side. Is that condition still something you could agree to?
I'd rather not do. I mean, who knows what the future holds? And I don't see any good reason why there shouldn't be helicopters allowed in there.
And I guess that's, and the reason I'm looking at you is that according to the last approval and the correspondence between Planner's Office and you was that the conditions from 2006 would remain. And it said the rental and storage of helicopters in the hangars are to be prohibited. And I think that was, that was something from the 2006 approval that was agreed to. Now, again, I don't know if you were here or if that was with the City of Meriden. So maybe I should direct the question to you.
That agreement was with the City of Meriden for the 40 hangars that it was agreed that I could put up with, put up in 2006. It was for a specific 40 hangars at a different spot on the Wallingford side of the airport.
Can I just interrupt? The, the previous approval, this is, this is a modification of the previous approval. So the conversation that we had was that the previous conditions would stand.
I just wasn't-
Otherwise, I think the review is going to be a lot more involved than what we're talking about right now.
Okay. I just didn't read the prior conditions. So I-
Okay. All right. Nothing further. Good. Anyone else? Yeah. Mr. Allenson?
Just really one question. Are these going to be fully assembled aircraft? Or will there be parts, wing pieces? I mean, is it just going to be at most three aircraft fully assembled in the hangar for storage? Or is there going to be other stuff?
There's no plane to store any parts other than whole aircraft.
Okay.
Thank you. And Casey, just a question on the number of tie downs plus aircraft and hangars on, on the Wallingford's property. I know in your notes to us, it was 50. In the communication from the Water Division, they had approved 60. But the, the approval on the application, the original application was 50, is that correct?
Yeah, the actual special permit limited to 50.
It's a 50.
I think that was based on conversations that were had over the course of that meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't some inconsistency. Any other Commission members? If not, I'll go to the public. This is a public hearing. Any members of the public would like to speak on the application, please state your name and address and begin your comments.
For the record, my name is Jim Wolfe. I'm a member of the Economic Development Commission. And on Monday, October 2, which was our last EDC meeting, I made a motion to support Mr. Gavin's project to build a hangar at the airport. And unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of conversation. It seemed like a very natural fit, airport, hangar. It wasn't like he was trying to put a six-room hotel in. So he does have the full support of the economic development. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. Are you planning on putting a six-room hotel somewhere in the downtown area? Any other members of the public would like to speak on the application? Seeing none, Casey, I'll bring it back to you for any comments you may have.
Sure. My primary comment was just the comment regarding the previous conditions of approval. As I said before, this, and was alluded to, this was based on a much larger project that was approved for the City of Meriden back in 2006. That's still valid. They've kept up with their extensions. So this kind of builds off of that, like Mr. Wolfe alluded to. It's a lot less significant of an impact than that overall project was. But we need to take that into account in terms of the larger context. So the agreement about the 50 hang, or the 50 aircraft, part of that was contingent on basically as the hangars got built, some of the tie downs going away. So that would still apply at some point, but it won't apply for this hangar because it wouldn't be enough to necessitate that yet. I also understand there are some conditions from the Fire Marshal in here. My understanding from the Fire Marshal is that they're very, that they've all come to an agreement. They're very satisfied. And then the only other thing I wanted to, two other things to note are the comments from the Water and Sewer Division. Meriden Markham Airport is in our Aqua for Protection area. So that was the reason that Water and Sewer had a lot of sort of conditions back then that were agreed to. That's why we have to make sure that there's no storage of fuel outside. There's no maintenance because that opens it up to having hazardous materials on the site. So that has been addressed, I believe, with the Water and Sewer Division. And will just be made a condition of approval. And then I'm recommending, the one other thing I need are sedimentation and erosion controls on the final plans and a $2,000 S and E bond. There's hardly anything they have to do for S and E out, out there because it's, it's all pavement already. So it's a minimal bond.
Okay, thank you. And before, before I close the public hearing, I'll give the applicant an opportunity to make any final comments. You're certainly not obligated to, but if you'd like to.
No, I think it's, I think I've said it all.
Okay, good enough. So at this point in time, I'll entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan. Voting beginning with Mr. Kohan.
Yes.
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 And yes, close the public hearing. Now I'll entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Commission to approve a special permit modification for J Gavin Air LLC to construct one aircraft hangar in addition to those previously approved special permit number 413-06, 40 aircraft hangars, and 10 aircraft tie downs on the portion of the Meriden Markham Airport that is located in the Town of Wallingford on Hanover Street, also known as 213 Evansville Avenue, Meriden, has shown its previously approved plans entitled, "Construct New Taxi Lanes and Hangar Site Plan Dated 11/25/03, Updated to 2/11/04." And has updated on plans entitled, "Propose Hangar Applicant, City of Meriden, Meriden Markham Airport, Evansville Avenue, Meriden, Wallingford, Connecticut, Dated September 7, 2017, Revised to 9/28/17, Subject to the Following Conditions: Number one, final plans shall depict all previously approved hangars/tie downs and reference previously approved application in notes. Number two, all conditions of the special permit 106-11 shall remain in effect. Condition number three, the applicant should post a $2,000 sedimentation and erosion control bond, controls to be depicted on final plan. Number four, the rental and storage of helicopters in the hangars are to be prohibited. Number five, at any given time, there are to be no more than 50 stored aircraft on the Wallingford side, either in hangars or tie downs. Number six, comments from the Town of Wallingford Fire Marshal, dated 9/26/17. And finally, number seven, comments of the Town of Wallingford Chief Engineer from the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer, dated 9/21/17."
Thank, thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion on the application. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kohan. Voting beginning with Mr. Kohan, please.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This brings us to our next, it's a public hearing. It's a public hearing for Public Act Number 17-155, Consideration of Opt Out of the Temporary Healthcare Structures, Accessory Use Requirements Established by the Act. And again, Mr. Kohan, if you please read the legal notice and then note all correspondence for the record, please.
Yes. Wallingford Planning and Zoning Commission will hold the following public hearing at their meeting on Wednesday, October 11, 2017, at 7:00 p.m. in the Robert Parisi Council Chambers, Town Hall 45, South Main Street. Pursuant to Public Act Number 17-155, a public hearing will be held to discuss and possibly act on whether to opt out of the temporary healthcare structures, accessory use requirements established by the Act. If the Commission votes to opt out, final approval by the Town Council is required. And for correspondence, there's quite a bit. I have a memorandum from Janice Small to Casey Hand, Town Planner, dated October 5, 2017. I have the passed bill, Public Act, Act 17-155. I have the legislative summary, an act concerning temporary healthcare structures. I have a memo from Robert Scully, Supervising Sanitary Engineer, to Directors of Health, dated July 26, 2017. I have a document entitled, "Connecticut Chapter of the American Planning Association, SB 922, An Act Concerning Temporary Healthcare Structures." I have another document, "Connecticut Chapter of American Planning Association, Testimony Regarding Raised Bill Number 922, An Act Concerning Temporary Healthcare Structures." I have an Inner Office Memorandum dated October 10, 2017, from Eric Kruger, Senior Engineer, to Casey, Wallingford Town Planner. I have a memo dated October 10, 2017, from Eloise Hazelwood, Department of Health, to Casey Castello, Casey Hand. I have another memo from Mayor Dickinson, dated October 6, 2017, to James Saitter, Chairman of Planning and Zoning Commission. I have a document that states what towns have opted out of the Act. And I have a memorandum from Erin O'Hair to Casey Hand, dated October 11, 2017. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Kohan. Casey, as this is, as this is, this public hearing was really originated by the Planning and Zoning Commission. If you would please give some background on this, exactly what this temporary healthcare structure legislation is, what the background is on that?
Sure. So this is legislation that was passed and was effective as of October 1. The legislation, it's not a zoning regulation. It's separate, it's its own legislation. But essentially, it allows for, it essentially requires that municipalities allow for what they, what they're calling temporary healthcare structures, which are subject to certain conditions. So the healthcare structures, essentially, the idea is that for someone that needed to be in the vicinity of a caretaker, that they would be able to have a separate small structure to live in, and that the caretaker could live in the primary house. It's limited to 500 square feet. The municipalities can require a rather large bond. The municipalities can require that they connect to sewer and/or septic. There is a requirement that, in order to construct the temporary healthcare structure, you still have to comply with setbacks and lot coverage requirements and get a building permit. So I think that the, the idea behind it is, is a good one. The intention behind it is a good one. But I think that the legislation sort of runs into some challenges. The, you already have accessory apartments that allow for, and accessory apartments do not differentiate between around who lives there. It's really more of a, it's a zoning regulation. It's based on how the property is laid out, how the apartment relates to the main house, and things of that nature. Your accessory apartment regs allow someone actually to go bigger, to go up to 780 square feet, but it does have to be attached to the main house. The idea with the temporary healthcare legislation is that these, the structures would be temporary in nature in that they are required to be transportable. And as I said, I think, I think the intention behind it is good, but I think you, A, have a regulation in place that addresses a lot of that need. And I have some concerns about this legislation. There's been a lot of sort of buzz in the planning community about this legislation and sort of the impact of it. Before I get into that, the legislation essentially allows for these unless a municipality chooses to opt out. So you have to actively opt out or you're in. The process for opting out involves a public hearing by the Planning and Zoning Commission under your normal procedures for holding a public hearing. And then if you were to vote to opt out, the matter then has to be referred to the Town Council here for, for a vote. So it's a little bit unusual. Like I said, it's not really a zoning regulation. And part of that gets into some of the concerns that I have, one of which, one of the big concerns that I have is this requires some town staff member, and the Health Department memo alludes to this also, presumably somebody on planning staff, to make a determination or to get, well, to require a doctor's note, basically affirming that the person meets the definition of physically or mentally disabled, as it's provided for in here. And that is really outside of the purview of planning and zoning. It also creates a lot of questions about HIPAA rights. Do we require this to be resubmitted every year? So the level of documentation that they have to provide for us is just not really a zoning matter. Similarly, who would live in the structure is typically not something considered by zoning. Now, again, this is not a zoning regulation, so that's why something like this can, can specify that. And that is one of the differences between if you were to write a zoning regulation, or if you were to, or use your existing zoning regulation, or to keep the temporary healthcare structure option. So there are some issues about HIPAA laws and oversight. And another issue is that the caregiver has to be unpaid. So I have, I don't know how we would verify that the caregiver is unpaid. But on the other hand, we don't want, I don't believe the intention or what we would want is for it to turn into some sort of business-type thing where different people over time live in this structure and it's, the caregiver is providing it as a paid service. I don't think that's what we would be looking for in our single-family residential zones. The, there's a question as to whether or not other occupants are permitted. There seem to be different interpretations of that. As I said, we can require a rather large bond, up to $50,000. But we also, the, the, that structure is required to be removed when the person residing there either no, no longer lives there or no longer qualifies. So then we would have to go in and essentially require removal of these structures, which I think is going to be very difficult, especially because they have to hook up to utilities. They have to do a lot of these things. And that's an investment. And there's a cost associated with that. So I think if the, if we want, if we think it's appropriate to allow for zoning regulations or town ordinances or other regulations that provide for options for people to either age in place, or if they do need a caregiver to live quasi-independently, but also have a caregiver in the area, I'm just not sure that this really accomplishes that the way that we would want to. Because on the one hand, I think the regulation is difficult to, a lot about the regulation is difficult to enforce. On the other hand, a lot of it is difficult for someone to actually enact because of some of the requirements. There is an annual renewal fee. The other challenge with the legislation is that it requires a 15-day approval period. So some, someone brings in their application for the building permit, it has to be approved within 15 days. Within that 15-day period, within three days, that person has to notify their neighbor. Now, I'm not sure- Now, I'm not sure why, because there's no recourse for the neighbor if they do have a concern. So, and it doesn't allow much time for us to address questions that people might have, or much time for the town to review all of the requirements. I mean, we're going to need the utility people, the utility departments to review it. We're going to need the building department, fire marshal, to have time to review it, and that just doesn't give a whole lot of time for them. So, like I said, there's been a lot of sort of talk back and forth about this legislation, and I gave you a list of different communities and what they have chosen to do so far. This is by no means an exhaustive list, it's just the information I had access to. What a lot of municipalities are doing is opting out and then choosing to revisit their accessory apartment regulation to see if they'd like to modify those at all. Some municipalities just said they feel like their accessory apartment, or whatever they have, already addresses the issue. Some said they were going to look to write a new regulation. The towns that chose not to opt out, generally the position of those towns seems to be that they don't think there will be much demand, so there's no point in opting out anyhow. That was the general comment, which isn't, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but it doesn't, it's still, then the legislation doesn't really address what it's trying to address anyhow, so we might as well make sure that our regulation does address what we feel needs to be addressed. And then there are several towns that are undecided, or they're doing what we're doing, which is having the public hearing to discuss the potential of opting out. And I do have a lot of, or you do have communication from the Water and Sewer Division about water and sewer hookups, and what would be involved in that, and some of the concerns about that. Same with the healthcare, or the Health Department. I met with the mayor and the town attorney and the Director of Health, just to sort of go over this and make sure that everybody knew it existed, and, which they did, and that if, you know, that there was potential that the commission was holding a public hearing to discuss it. Procedurally, that would be followed by action by the town council if the commission does choose to opt out. So I wanted to sort of set, make sure that everyone that needs to know that knows that. So you have response from a lot of those departments. As I said in the beginning, I think the intention behind this legislation is good, and I think there are people that are put in difficult positions and need to accommodate a situation that they hadn't planned for, or hadn't expected, or people would like an opportunity to age in place. We all know that there is an aging population in the state. I just don't think that the administrative process laid out in this legislation is, I think it's very difficult to enforce, and I think it's very difficult to apply. And I don't think that the legislation necessarily allows for exactly what we might feel is appropriate. The other thing is, what is a temporary healthcare structure? It has to be transportable, as I said. It has to be, it cannot be on a foundation. It has to connect to certain utilities. So there's a lot of question out there. I mean, there are a lot of different structures out there that could meet that description. So, you know, I think that the accessory apartment regulations that we have have seemed to work really well for people so far. The only thing I usually run into as a concern is that people sometimes want a bigger accessory apartment than they're allowed to have. But that seems to address the same issues, but it sort of maintains the subordinate nature of the second dwelling unit. It maintains a physical interaction between them, and then we don't have to worry about removing it. When somebody with an accessory apartment, if somebody leaves, or no longer lives there, it can be rented out, it can be used by the family living there, it can be converted back into living space as part of the main house. And I'm not sure that, I don't necessarily think that it's any more expensive to do that than this, and I think that's more desirable. And it allows the caretaker and the person being taken care of in that situation, then they're together. Then there's easy access, should there be an issue, which is not really a concern of the Planning and Zoning Commission, but it's just, you know, I think a general concern if we're looking at this legislation. So, that was my very long-winded explanation of this legislation. Like I said, there are a lot of different opinions about it, there are a lot of different perspectives. The general chatter seems to be that most towns were opting out, but not necessarily because they didn't, you know, a lot of the municipalities agreed that the intention was there, but just that they felt like they could essentially write a better regulation, or a regulation that worked better for them. So, at this point, your public hearing is open, you can see if anyone from the public wants to speak, and then if you are inclined, you could take a vote. If you are inclined to take a vote, the only vote you would need to take would be to opt out. You may want to make that motion, whether it's going to fail or pass, just so that there is a motion that's acted upon.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Certainly was not a long-winded conversation. I think it was a very important one, and a very direct, and I think hit on certainly some of the, really all of the key points of this legislation, the, you know, the positive points of it, as well as some of the pitfalls that may exist. So, before I go to the commission, I will ask, are there any members from the public who would like to speak on this particular, this particular application? Yes, gentleman in the back. Again, please name an address.
Gene Letourneau, Durham Road. I wasn't here for this item, but, to my curiosity, I agree with the HIPAA end of it, where someone has someone living there elderly, or not even elderly, but how do you know that some person in an accessory building needs to be there? You don't have the right to ask why, you know, you can't get in specifics. HIPAA violation. Number two, trying to vision an accessory building, and all I can picture is a mobile home in someone's driveway or backyard. And then how do you know when that's got to go away? You know, you're not going to know. Residential neighbors, it's going to be, you're going to have to allow it, you know? It's going to be on the state, it's not going to be on you. So, and on the short end of it, I would recommend that you opt out of this, because I don't see any enforcement. You have, going to have no control, no control at all. And for, to be unpaid, who's it going to be? It's going to be a family member, or a friend. I mean, who's going to come in unpaid? There are many places, many residents in town that I go to, to my occupation, that there are paid caretakers. It's an outside source. And they live in the home, and you don't know that they're there, and that's their job to take care of that person. So I don't see a need for it. I think it's just the legislature trying to pacify some people. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Other members of the public who would like to speak? Seeing that, I'll bring you to the commission for just discussion. Commission members who would like to make comments? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, I'll start out. So, you know, I would really be interested in, you know, the intention of the legislation. There must be some reason that, you know, the legislator, legislature passed this public act. And I don't know who sponsored this bill, but again, there must be, you know, some reason, you know, something lacking in, you know, towns' regulations that prompted somebody to do this. I would suspect that, you know, it's a good-intentioned bill, and, you know, it's not to, you know, allow somebody to build these structures and things like that. So it might be good to go back and, you know, see if we could find out who sponsored it, and what the impetus was behind it. I was also really interested in, as Casey was mentioning, the towns that have opted out, not opting out, undecided. And, you know, I looked through the list, and, you know, I'm thinking towns that are primarily rural, you know, may want to opt out, or they need these structures. But the list is kind of, you know, a mixture of rural and, you know, populated areas like Southington. Southington and Fairfield are not opting out. And I really, you know, would not follow that those two towns see no demand in structures like this, where towns that have opted out, you know, or, you know, some of the more rural towns, but, you know, there's Hamden, and, you know, Farmington, which are, you know, pretty heavily populated, and, you know, they're opting out. So, you know, I don't know what the rhyme or reason is with some of the thinking with those towns, but it is kind of interesting who's decided what. And my last comment is, you know, I am kind of leaning towards, you know, opting out. And I think what we should do, though, is, and there are a couple of documents in here, is, you know, as Casey suggested, look at modifying, you know, the accessory apartment regulations, and kind of, you know, see what kind of medical needs that may be in the bill itself, and some of the other documents, that, you know, we don't cover in the accessory regs, and, you know, maybe include that. So, yeah, I'm kind of leaning towards the opt-out with changing the regs.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Other commissioners? Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, first off, I would agree with the comments Mr. Cohen said at the end. I would ask that we, future discussion, review our accessory apartment regs in light of this. I am in favor of the town, certainly the commission, opting out of this. I mean, certainly would not want to be on record as saying, certainly I'm in favor of providing affordable onsite medical or mental health care to private residents, but I think our regulations currently allow for that. I think the comments we've received from the various town departments really kind of highlight the reasons. I think that the two that jump out to me is, you know, number one, at this time, we already have in the Town of Wallingford Planning and Zoning Regulations, an accessory apartment section, which may be a benefit in a healthcare circumstance, which this bill obviously was trying to address. The other concern is, Casey mentioned it towards the end of her comments, the idea of enforcement. It potentially creates problems for enforcement, compliance with HIPAA requirements on, you know, exactly what is the medical need, and the enforcement of removal of the structure. I mean, some of the material we have, it kind of looks like a tiny house that'd be, you know, onsite for someone. And again, I'm all in favor of, you know, certainly being able to provide affordable onsite medical care, you know, in someone's private residence, but I think based upon the information we have, it's a well-intentioned law, but I think Wallingford's already addressed this. So I would be supporting the town opting out.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. Anyone else? Steve?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wow, that mic got loud. Sorry about that. I agree with the other committee members. I mean, there's, this law really does seem to try to give everyone an opportunity to allow their loved ones to be close to them and provide for them, but, you know, as everyone was saying, we have accessory apartment regulations available. Those regulations have notification to the neighbors, where the neighbors actually have a voice, and this law requires a mandatory granting, no matter what the neighbors say. And that's a concern. If there was a specific type of structure, just hypothetically, a company makes a structure that we don't like, too bad, you know? And it doesn't give us really an opportunity to protect the neighborhoods that we have. Also, the correspondence that's here regarding the, just the burdens that are put on the town to try and make something like this happen, when we already have regulations in place for accessory apartments, does, it just seems unnecessary at this point to really increase infrastructure for something that we already have that availability there. I agree with re-looking at our accessory apartment regs and seeing what we can do. I'm also concerned with the idea of maintaining medical records in our planning department. I mean, the idea of having those there, are they now public record? If a neighbor comes in and claims that their neighbor is no longer disabled, or has never been disabled, how do they handle that? And how do we handle that? What rights do they have to that? And that's a huge concern as far as privacy is, as far as I'm concerned. So I would be in favor of opting out as well. And, you know, again, I think the idea is a good one. I just don't think it will work in practice for us.
Thank you, Mr. Malinsen. And not to be redundant, certainly the comments that the other commission members made, I certainly agree with those. I think that, to some degree, our, the memo that we received from our corporate counsel somewhat sums this up, you know, where she said, "While the intent may be well-meaning, the act is poorly written and void of any understanding of what a municipality must establish in order to properly implement the requirements." To me, to a very large degree, I think that that really says it all, and covers a lot of the things other commission members and our town planner had mentioned, with respect to the HIPAA requirements, with respect to how one goes about administering this, the extra layer that has to take place, and dealing with some of the, you know, some of the privacy issues that would create, I think, some very real challenges. And the idea of that, once an application is received, again, it was pointed out, it needs to be approved in fifteen days, and really simply approved. There's, you know, very little, a limited amount of time for a review process. We also then look at when the structure's no longer being occupied by a disabled person, then it needs to be removed. While we have a fifty thousand dollar bond, as far as having that removed becomes a real issue. The town certainly is not going to pull the bond, go onto private property, and pull a building off of someone's property. I can, I think, rest assured that that's not going to happen. So I think that just creates, you know, another issue from a removal standpoint. And I think, as commission members pointed out, we do have accessory, we do have accessory apartment regulations on the books. There may be some things that we can look at, certainly there's commission members that are, you know, interested in taking a look at those regulations and seeing how they perhaps could be modified in order to address perhaps some of the issues that this legislation is proposing to be addressed. But again, I just think this is, you know, basically a good idea that has a lot of unintended consequences that I don't think anyone really wants to face. So, those are my comments. Casey, any final comments?
Just one sort of additional comment. I was thinking about as the commission was talking. The, a lot of municip, well, I don't know how many, some municipalities require special permits for their accessory apartments, or their, whatever similar regulation they have. And it seemed from the member of the Connecticut Chapter of the American Planning Association that is on the legislative committee for the CCAPA, so he was part of writing this, talked about having it as a by-right use, that that was one of the big concerns that they had. I mean, they're allowing people to opt out, but that the idea was to try to make the process relatively quick, and relatively straightforward, and that there wouldn't be sort of slowdown and backlash and all this. sort of slowdown and backlash and all this extra expense of having to deal with a special permit. Your accessory apartments are allowed by site plan. So you've written a regulation where it's, where you've decided as long as you do this, you're good. And as you all know, I mean, we approve an accessory apartment almost every, or to almost every meeting. And hardly ever does anybody come with an attorney or any special representation or anything of that nature. So I think we already, and typically that takes about 30 days. So, you know, if there are outstanding issues, maybe a couple of meetings, but, so I think that issue, that concern is already addressed by the town as well. I just wanted to add that in there.
Thank you. Thank you, Casey. Before I ask for a motion to close the public hearing, I'd ask, any commission members have any final comments that they would like to make? And again, any members of the public? So at this point in time, I would entertain a motion to close our public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move to close the public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, and I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, based upon the totality of the record, I make a motion to affirmatively decide in accordance with Section J of Public Act Number 17-155 to opt out of the provisions of Public Act Number 17-55 and of subsection A of Section 8.2 of the Connecticut General Statues, as amended by Public Act 17-155 regarding authorization for the installation of temporary healthcare structures because of the following reasons. Number one, comments received from the Town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Sea Engineer dated 10/10/17, comments from the Town of Wallingford Department of Health dated 10/10/17, comments received from the Office of the Mayor dated 10/6/17, comments received from the Office of the Corporation Council of the Town of Wallingford dated 10/5/17. Also, the current Town of Wallingford PCC regulations already provide for accessory apartments, which may benefit in healthcare circumstance. And finally, compliance with HIPAA requirements for verification could be intrusive to the applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion. Do we have a second motion?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes. Thank you, Casey, for your presentation. Our next item, it's old business, it's a site plan, multifamily conversion in CLB Zone DeCarlo at 143 South Main Street. Would the applicant please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation? And Mr. Cohen, would you please note all correspondence for the record, please?
Yes. Have a document, TrueGrid Pro Plus Manufacturers Product Specifications Sheet. Another document from TrueGrid, Section 02795, porous flexible paving. Have another document that is a drawing from TrueGrid. And that is it.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. And again, much like I mentioned to the, our first applicant, there's only four members of the commission here this evening. Normally, we have five. Give the option if you'd like to, you know, continue or carry this over to our next meeting.
No, I think I'm ready to go.
Excuse me?
I'm ready to go.
Okay. And just one other thing, I was looking, because this was continued from our August meeting, and as far as the commission members that were at the August meeting, were myself and Mr. Cohen, I've asked Mr. Fitzsimmons and Mr. Allison if they had reviewed the record in the minutes from the August meeting and if they felt comfortable as far as sitting on this application. And both of them indicated that they had reviewed it, they feel comfortable sitting on the application, so you have the four of us. So again, please introduce yourself and continue with your presentation.
My name is Christian DeCarlo. I am the owner of CN Jones Homes LLC, which is the owner of the property known as 143 South Main Street. We're looking to convert this into a three-family residential, three units up and down. The first floor will be a two-bedroom apartment. The second floor will also be a two-bedroom apartment, and the third floor would be a The staircases would be kept on the inside of the property to maintain the outward appearance of the property as it sits now, so no changes would be made to that. All the utilities and stuff will be in the basement. There'd be access for laundry also provided in the basement. The parking would consist of the TrueGrid paving system, which is a 100% permeable grid-type paving system, and that would be finished with a layer of gravel, so no additional pavement would have to be added to the property.
And with the, with the TrueGrid, just, if you could explain, just designate as far as what extent that paving material is going to be placed on the property.
Okay. It would be basically where the existing driveway is now, that will still be pavement. Where the parking spaces are going to be for the additional parking, that would be this system. So no additional pavement would be added to the land at all. Basically, what the TrueGrid does is there's a four-to-six inch base layer of processed that is laid down. The TrueGrid, actual physical grid is then laid on top of that. There are stakes or anchoring materials that come with that that place it on the top. And then what you would do is you fill that in with a layer of more or less like a pea gravel. It's meant to be as porous as possible, but you don't want to have stones that are like one inch, because that would fill the actual, you know, cups and you would have it run over, because you still want it to be flat enough so that a snow could be removed from it.
And just looking at the, you know, at the driveway right now, the, what I would call the turnaround.
That would be removed and this TrueGrid would be put there. So it basically would be a straight shot back to the garage and then everything to that left-hand side.
So the true, so the, just so I'm clear, so the TrueGrid, your parking, the depth of your parking spaces are 18 feet, right?
Yes.
But the TrueGrid is going to extend beyond that. It'll be essentially go to the...
It'll go to the existing driveway.
It'll go to the existing driveway.
Yes. That way there, there's no, prevent rutting and stuff like that, because then if you didn't do the TrueGrid all the way out to the driveway, basically what would happen is you'd develop ruts.
Okay. All right. Commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Fitzsimmons.
I have several. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have your, we have the map and the information from the TrueGrid website. So since there's no cover letter or something, it's a very basic question. The TrueGrid, is it something you buy, you install, or is it a company that comes and does the work for you?
It could be done either way. There are TrueGrid installation companies in the state of Connecticut. This is also, could be done by any landscape contractor that has done this type of work before, or a company that does pavers.
Okay. Because my understanding, and again, I watched and watched the August meeting and certainly reviewed the minutes and the material, the runoff question, I mean, so this is your answer to address the runoff?
Right. Yes, it's 100% permeable, so there is no extra runoff or anything like that.
And forgive me, the reason I ask about, I would never be able to install this. You know, I'd be the guy hiring somebody. So that's why I'm asking, because pavers and runoff, certainly runoff is a huge issue. It's a huge issue for any project, and normally the plan would depict exactly what they're going to do. So as an individual, that's why I'm asking, is your plan to hire or do it yourself?
It's going to be done by people that work for my management company. They're actually probably going to do the install. There is going to be a company that brings the processed material, they're going to be the ones that actually lay the pavement, that another company, you know, the same company will come back, dump more material, and then it'll be leveled off.
Okay. And again, because the material we got was just from their website, I think I'm in line to ask these questions.
No, no, no. I agree.
Again, I mean, I could buy the stuff, I could never do it. And I'm quick to say that all my neighbors would say, "Fitzie would never do that." But I guess the question is, because it's runoff, you know, it's certainly, you know, you have to keep it on your property. So I think that's why I'm trying to understand, so it looks good, but I guess the question is, who's going to do it and how will we know?
Processed base layer that's laid would be the stuff that sucks up all the water. I mean, that's where it's going to end up. I mean, the system itself just allows the water to sink in and stuff like that. So, I mean, following procedure to make it permeable, you have to put the processed material down and stuff like that. So it's not, I mean, if you installed it improperly, would it be as effective? Probably not. But would it still be permeable? Yes, it'd be as permeable as the dirt underneath.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, through you, question to Casey, the TrueGrid materials received for this applicant, are you aware of anyone else who's done this in the town?
The, I talked to the town engineer about this a little bit, and the one example I'm aware of is the project that they did at Vietnam Veterans Memorial Park. They did a portion as part of, they got a grant to do a portion of that as permeable That's the only example that I'm aware of to this point. And so I would, one of my, what I would suggest to you is that as a condition of approval, it be, the specific material be reviewed and approved by the engineering department prior to installation and then inspected after installation prior to the CO or the building permit. So it, I mean, from everything, it's a newer technology, it's expensive, which is why a lot of people don't do it. And there is some, there can be some additional maintenance involved. But from a environmental standpoint, it's a great thing, because it allows, you know, sort of an in-between type of parking area.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. And then if I could, can I ask you, what is the current grade? I mean, I'm very familiar with the site. What's the current grade of that driveway? I mean, I've seen...
It's, it does slope slightly from the front towards the garage, and then it goes back up again to the actual entrance of the garage. But the, where the parking is, is primarily flat until you get to about where the garage starts, and then it slopes a little bit to the rear of the property.
Okay. Because I'm thinking, having been at the, a couple of nearby residents, including the Wallingford Historic Preservation Trust, there's a drop down there, and then you have other houses, other houses and roads. I guess that's the...
Right, behind, yeah.
Right. And I think we're, yeah, so, all right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Other commission members with questions?
Yes, Mr. Allison.
Just one, Mr. Chairman. I know you talked about how far the TrueGrid would go up to the existing pavement. How far back towards the garage?
It would be about, it's almost even with the garage. It would be, there's like a foot or something. I mean, if there was, it would kind of depend on the install, whether they cut it off abruptly, because the way the tiles are, they're two foot by two foot. So you may have it right even with the garage, or it may be a foot in, depending on how they actually laid out. I mean, yeah, I mean, you're talking like a foot or six inches difference.
And just as a follow-up, the grade as far as where that meets the ground next to the garage, does it grade down towards that, or does it grade up?
It was, it's down towards the back on that side away from the garage. So basically, what would happen is the TrueGrid and the gravel topping would line up with the existing driveway, would make that as level as possible. And then there would be an inch or so, or two inches, whatever was left, to start the grass, so that the grass didn't grow over the TrueGrid and we weren't looking at a big patch of grass after.
So almost like a little mini swale kind of between the grass and the TrueGrid?
Yeah, I mean, you're talking only a few inches, though, because it's just the amount of the actual block, you know, the actual piece of plastic.
Thank you.
Just so, because you're not, you don't show it on your plans, you know, specifically where this TrueGrid is going to go, just so we're very clear. Again, it's going to...
It's going to start four...
It's going to start, it's going to start four feet from the property line. It's going to continue all the way to the pavement, to the existing pavement, which is probably maybe six feet in from the garage? The corner of the garage is probably, probably there's a six-foot difference between where the driveway is and then the south corner of the garage. Is that correct?
Yes, about, yes.
And then it's going to go to the garage, probably no, it'll, no more than a foot, there'll be no more than a foot difference between the garage and where the pavement would end, correct?
Yes.
So we have that clear?
Yes.
Okay. And again, you represented then the, on the south side of the property that is far, because we did ask if you'd provide us with, you know, some information on drainage, which I don't see here, but...
Right. Well, because this would be taking the place of, you know, doing the bore and testing.
No, I understand. We asked, actually, we're looking for drainage and then also for, you know, slope and all of that. But what you're saying is, on the south side of the property, where it hits the Historic Trust property, that, it does not slope toward that property, is that correct? It's fairly level there?
I mean, it's fairly level. I mean, it does, I mean, there might be a couple spots where it does slope that way, but that's closer to the front of the house more. Towards, as you get towards the back where the tree line is, that's a little bit more level.
Okay. And when you put the TrueGrid in, that's, is there an opportunity to kind of level that out somewhat, so it's not sloping toward the other property?
Yes, because it would, well, it would have to be level to itself. So as long as, yes, because what they could do is they could put four inches of processed here and then six inches of processed down that way. So that would level the, you know, existing terrain to match up to the driveway.
True. Okay. All right. Casey, any comments before I ask if there's any members of the public who would like to speak?
No. Like I said, just suggested condition of approval that engineering sign off on the proposed material and design of the TrueGrid or the pervious pavement, and that the location of the pervious pavement be noted on a final set of plans, exactly. And it's up to the commission whether, but you may want to consider requiring that the new material be installed prior to issuance of a CO. Would you agree to that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. And then the only other comment I have is, in August, which now seems like a very long time ago, there was concern expressed by the Historic Preservation Trust, and there were some questions about the property line. So you requested that the applicant get a survey. You do have a survey provided. In terms of the stormwater and the drainage, that's why I want to get the okay from engineering, because the idea is that with the pervious pavement, there would be a zero increase in runoff, but I want to have confirmation of that.
Thank you. At this point, this is not a public hearing, with whose members of the public would like to speak on the application, please feel free, come forward, state your name and address. Mr. Farrell.
Jerry Farrell, Jr., President of the Wallingford Historic Preservation Trust, the owner of 153 South Main, the butter. We thank the Planning and Zoning Commission for encouraging conversation. We've had a chance to talk with Christian at length a couple of times. As to the survey, he provided us with his survey. We've had our surveyor look at it. She's in agreement with it, that we agree on where the property line is. So that's a good thing. We'd encourage you to accept his plan with the... We'd encourage you to accept his plan with the, the concrete blocks. That, um, he's walked the property with us. There really isn't a great issue for our property. I think it goes to the properties behind. But in essence, we're getting no paving, and that's what we were looking for. That paving is what sends water off onto somebody else's property. That's not happening, happening here. We're happy. I know you can't make it a condition, but he is going to be putting some landscaping on our property so that there is a buffer for us. So we're happy, and we would encourage you to approve this.
Good, thank you. Any other members?
Hi, Annalise Cincini. I'm at 131 South Main, which is the property behind and downhill from this property. My, my main concern with, with this construction is also with the driveway and the parking lot. I've not heard of true grid before, and I can only assume that, that it will work. But, um, the, the area where the parking lot will be is directly, leads directly into our yard. And it is downhill, our yard downhill from this property. So I certainly, how do I want to say it? I don't want to discourage him from doing what, what he's legally able to do with his own property, but I definitely would like to make sure that we don't have more water running off into our property. Our property, excuse me, already has difficulty with runoff in that particular part of our yard. We start up on Main Street, and our property ends down at Whittlesey's level. So we have quite a drop-off in our yard, and we have, uh, we've been there for probably 16 or 17 years now, and have had quite a bit of erosion already just from, from the current state, not that it's a bad state, but from the current setup there. So, um, I'm really nervous for that part of our yard if we have more runoff. If, if the engineers can, guarantee is not the right word, but if they can, can, if they feel confident that, that the runoff will be controlled, then, you know, we don't have any arguments with it. But I do, I do want it to be noted that that portion of, of the, where the parking will be, then definitely drops down into our yard. And I'm also wondering, in the future, if we, if we do notice an increase in runoff, if there's some sort of recourse we have, or if there's some sort of contingency that could be made as part of this plan, that if we do notice an increase in runoff or, or erosion in our yard, if there's some additional steps that can be taken to help prevent that.
Sure, I think with respect to that, that that would really, Casey, correct me if I'm wrong, but that would really be an issue then with, you know, you and the property owner. The, uh, you know, the town is, Casey mentioned, and I certainly think this, if we do approve this application, one of the, one of the conditions would be, is Casey, as our town planner mentioned, concerning having the town engineer look at the plan and to essentially, based on his observations, to, to verify that there's no increase in runoff. But I hate to say that, but you, you know, we can't guarantee that that's gonna be the case. I know where, you know, where I live, there were substantial amount of homes placed behind us. And, you know, the, it was certainly thought that there wouldn't be any runoff and, or additional runoff. And at times when there's a lot of rain, I have kind of cake mix in my backyard.
It happens.
But again, I, I think that certainly our town engineer would, uh, is certainly talented and skilled, and I would have a great deal of confidence that he would be able to, you know, attest to the fact that based on what he sees and how the installation would go, that in fact, there wouldn't be any increased runoff. But, you know, unfortunately, there's, there's no guarantees of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Other members in the public? Seeing none, I guess I'll bring it back to the applicant. If you'd like to make any final comments, again, you're not compelled to make any.
Uh, I just wanted to mention a little bit more about the, you know, the true grid stuff. There are other companies that do make pervious pavers. There are some that roll out like a mat. Most fit together more like tiles, um, which is what true grid is. And basically, the thing that drew me to that brand was I could mark out the parking, because they actually have little things that go in there. They have the anchors and stuff for the wheel stops that fit right onto the grids. So everything comes as a, basically as a system. So it's not, you know, there's no parts of that that I would have to run out and get, you know, yellow tape for lines or something like that. Whereas most of the other systems didn't come with those kinds of, um, things. Also, um, the member of the public that where the, um, parking is and where their property starts, there's going to be about 15, 20, maybe even more of green space before it reaches their property.
Thank you. Any final comments from commission members?
Mr. Fitzsimmons? Just a technical question through you, Mr. Chairman, to the town planner. I apologize, the August meeting was months ago. I have no other comments or approval or memos from town departments. Were there other conditions on this?
Let me check.
Sorry, the chairman has provided me, Casey, so. Are there updated comments from town departments? Because all we have is the true grid.
Yeah, the only thing we receive was true grid, true grid.
There was, the first time around, um, a comment, actually dated back in June from the Fire Marshal's office that I can give you a copy with. I know they've worked at, oh, okay. I know they've worked at length with the applicant, and they seem to be, have reached or are moving towards agreement.
Well, I give Mr. Fitzsimmons an opportunity to review some of the, uh, the comments here. I would just like to make the comment, certainly at our August meeting, there was some, uh, you know, some issues and some, I think some very significant issues that were raised by, you know, some members of the public. And I'd just like to say, I think clearly you heard those comments, you heard the commission's comments, and I appreciate you getting together with the neighbors and to work through the issues that were presented at that time. So I just do want to note that, that I certainly appreciate that. I think commission members appreciate it, and I suspect all of the abutting of property owners do also. All right, at this point, I may entertain a motion on the application.
Oh, I'm sorry. One other technical, is there, um, Casey, is there a bond requirement in light of this?
For a single, or for a residential property for something like this, you would typically require a thousand dollars.
All right. And again, I'd entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the commission approve an application. A site plan for DeCarlo to convert a single-family house to a three-family house at 143 South Main Street has shown on plans entitled, limited property boundary survey, improvement locations survey, land of CN Jones, CN Jones Homes LLC, 143 South Main Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated 8/29/17, revised to 9/7/2017, and altered and signed and dated by the applicant on 10/5/17, subject to the following conditions. Number one, plans for true grid materials and plans for installation to be reviewed and approved by the town of Wallingford Town Engineer prior to construction, during installation, and final sign-off to be provided by the town engineer prior to issuance of CO for the residents. Number two, final plans to be submitted by applicant showing outline by grading the area to be treated by true grid or similar paving system. Number three, all work related to the drainage and true grid installation to be completed and signed off by the town of Wallingford, specifically Town Engineer and Town Planner, prior to issuance of CO. Number four, comments of the town of Wallingford Fire Marshal dated 6/22/17, comments of the town of Wallingford Water and Sewer Seeing Engineer dated 6/30/17, and finally, the applicant should post a $1,000 SNE bond as recommended by the town planner. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion on the application, and we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, the application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Brings us to our next item, which is old business. It's a site plan, use of lots for vehicle storage. Gargano Limited Partnership at 9 and 11 First Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for the presentation. And, uh, Mr. Cohen, would you please note any additional correspondence for the record?
Yes, I have, uh, a letter from Bridget Gallagher to Casey Costello dated October 11th, 2017, and that's it.
Good, and Casey, the, the letter indicated that there were pictures? All we have is a letter, no pictures?
I think the applicant, the reason I didn't include the pictures was because they came through in a fax, and you couldn't see anything.
I just put them on your chair.
Okay.
Okay. You could just pass those around, please, when you have the opportunity. And again, as I indicated, as I indicated to the other applicants, there's, as you can see, there's four of us here. We normally have five. You have the option of continuing to next month or going forward with the application.
No, we're, we're ready tonight, we're fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just one other thing, at the, uh, just so you're aware, at our meeting last month, which was September, it was Mr. Cohen, Mr. Fitzsimmons, and I were, uh, is it I or me? I always get that confused. But anyway, there were the three of us. Mr. Allison was not at that meeting, but indicated that he is, you know, reviewed the, uh, the application, reviewed the minutes and all of the documents that went with the application, and he feels comfortable sitting in on the application. So there'll be the four of us that will be acting on this application. With that, if you'd please introduce yourself and begin your presentation.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Bridget Gallagher, and I'm the attorney for the applicant, John Gargano Limited Partnership. Um, and this, of course, is a site plan application. And it is offered in connection with my client's existing business, Wallingford Auto Park, uh, which is at 485 North Colony Road. The application indicates that these are two lots on First Street. And if you're all trying to locate in your mind where First Street is, you've probably never seen it because it's a paper street, meaning it was depicted on a subdivision map in the early 1900s and never built. Which unfortunately for my client raised a lot of complications because they had to go to court and get a quiet title, um, judgment, which he, which he has now done. These were, uh, these are resident, zone residential. These two, it's two building lots, believe it or not. It's in an R6 zone. He did go and get a variance for the right to park cars, store cars in it. To the north is a lot that is used for similar purposes from the Barberino dealership. That was grandfathered in. He had been using that for, for quite a while. To the east, um, our residential properties. And to the south, our residential properties. And then my client's, um, existing dealership, of course, is, is to the west. The access point for these lots is gonna be, is gonna be from North Street. This will not be open to the public. It will be for employees only. This storage lot will not be open to the public. It's gonna be strictly for storage. There's a little bit of a grade change, so it's really not ideal for having sales there anyway. But part of the main purpose of this is to find a place to put his employee parking and to have some storage of vehicles. There's right now, he has a service station, um, a service area, and there's a lot of movement of vehicles, um, in that area. And he has a lot of employees going in and out. And so this is really gonna have a place to, um, you know, to designate that. We, um, when we went for the variance, obviously, I'm sure as the commission knows, we have to give notice to all the butters. And, and Mr. Gargano went around and proactively talked to all of the ones who were interested in speaking with him. And we did work out, um, you know, some agreements with them regarding buffering. And so he is gonna have our variety, uh, and it's gonna be fenced. We did not prevent, uh, we did not propose a new fence in this area because the Barberino, there's already existing fence there, um, that Barberino had put up. If, if, for those of you who are here for the September 11th meeting, you may recall, my client wasn't here, um, and the commission members had some questions that we, as his representatives, weren't able to answer. And so he would, he would like the opportunity to address those. But one of the issues that came up, and, um, Casey Hant has brought up again with us, and actually before that meeting, we had, we had met with her and talked about it, is the fact that, um, you know, that there were concerns that down in his dealership, there were sometimes cars that were parked in the access points. And that there were, were employees sometimes parking along North Street. And what my client tells me, and he'll, he'll address this as well, you know, one of the biggest problems is it's the employees that are doing it. And so he's now has to impress upon them that they can't do that. And he has to rein them in. He's onsite, you know, he's at, he's at the dealership every time I call there. So he's onsite a lot and can do that. You know, and I think the employees thought, well, North Street's a public street. Why can't I just park there? And, you know, he's explained to them that it has to be self-contained. But this, this should actually help alleviate that problem a little bit because he's, you know, gonna have a place for them to park up there. And that's gonna reduce some of the movement down here, because I think he has 25 employees, you know, and that's a lot of people coming and going during the day. Also here is Mike Lambert. He can maybe speak, uh, my client's engineer, he can maybe speak to you about a few technical things, and then my client can address the parking.
Yes, good evening. My name's Michael Lambert, professional engineer with Harry Colson, 876 South Main Street, Plansville. As Bridget pointed out, with First Street being a paper street, and then the two, the two lots that we're trying to develop here, it was all grass, it was, um, forested trees. So the proposed plan is to have on First Street is gonna be a 24-foot wide paved access down to the end of their easement that they have. There's two paved connection, uh, points going to the west onto Wallingford Auto Park. There's also two access points going on to, uh, one of the parcels that, um, we're trying to develop. The edge of the pavement there will end at the property line. And then once you get onto the properties that are 9 and 11 First Street, it's gonna be a gravel-processed parking areas. To help, this was trying to help combat the runoff volumes that we're having, trying to help with the, um, keeping, keeping down the, um, zero increase runoff that we're trying to do here. So in order to take that, we're trying to, right now, it drains from east to west across the lots. On the northern parcel, it does flow into Barberino's, uh, property. But as far as our proposed plans are, is to actually have a, almost a berm along the northern, um, property edge, try to help that grading go down into the main areas, into that paved area of First Street. There are two catch basins that are gonna try to contain and, um, collect as much of the stormwater as, as they can. They're gonna get infiltrated into the underground detention system that we have. And then there is a high-level overflow that will connect to a catch basin that is in North Street.
Thank you. Any commission members have questions for the gentleman? Yeah, Mr. Fitzsimmons?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of questions from, um, the last, the last meeting. Can you confirm the number of spaces that'll be associated with this?
I believe it's 84, uh, 84 spaces. Some of them are gonna be stacked spaces. Those obviously won't be for the employees. Those are gonna be for, um, inventory. And there would be 25 that'll be, you know, fully compliant that they could use for employee parking.
Okay. Then I guess if I could, as a follow-up question to that, I'm looking at the variance that was granted on May 20th, 2016 for this site. And the variance said storage limited to no more than 150 vehicles. So I'm trying to reconcile that in my head, why the variance is 150, and you're asking for 84?
Because we didn't have a plan at that point, and we pulled, they asked us while we were sitting here. we were sitting here, and I didn't have an engineer, and we literally pulled a number out of the sky. We knew that was far in excess, and, you know.
It's my fault.
I think John picked that number. It went high.
That was definitely me. I did some quick measurements. Sure, I really thought it could hold 150, but it probably could have actually, but in time, the way it got developed, you know, for water and drainage and certain things, it just kept on shrinking. Gotcha. So that's where we came up with Cole and Son, coming up with the, the number we have today of 84. Okay, so the 84, I guess, I guess I just want to avoid a, a future problem, because I know you've been before us. So as a condition, you can accept 84 spaces. Although the variance is 150, you could accept as a condition of this approval, 84, because it's a site plan. So I mean, I want to make sure that we don't leave, leave tonight and have Casey has a problem saying, well, I got two different numbers.
Yes, 84 is what's depicted on the site plan. So that would be what would be approved, I would assume. That's what we're applying for.
Yeah. I mean, it is sort of an interesting situation. With vehicle sort of storage areas, typically what we've required is that they show us approximately how many cars they could fit. Usually with the dealerships, they can actually fit more cars than that because they're not keeping them in like a 9 by 18-type space. So it could be that more vehicles could fit in that area, and I think that wouldn't be objectionable as long as the drive aisle stays open the way that it's supposed to be, and as long as the employee parking spaces are the real 9 by 18 spaces, and as long as it's contained within that vehicle storage area.
Okay, so I guess that's why I'm asking the question, because I, and again, I think it'd be very fair to say, the commission and certainly state, we're familiar with the site.
Sure.
So the fact you're trying to address this, I applaud you. I mean, you got the variance, but I, I want to make sure there's no, we don't, we don't muddy the water, so to speak, so.
Of course, yes.
If the plan shows, if the plan shows 84, and there is, as long as the site aisles, I'm looking for something that I could put in the motion that would not become a future argument between the applicant and the town.
I think that we could certainly agree to the condition that, the two, the two criteria that Casey just suggested, which is that the, the 25 spaces that are shown on the, let me just, I don't have that full sheet.
Is this it? Right.
The 25 spaces that are on the westerly side would remain, you know, would remain fully compliant, and then, and then at the drive aisle, always remain open.
Is that what that is? That's a drive aisle? Okay, that's, that's fine. That's a drive aisle right there.
Correct.
And that gives us enough, that gives enough room for Casey, which is.
Is it just the 15 spaces that are employee spaces, or are there 10 more that I think?
There's 15 across right here.
Okay, I think I misspoke earlier, because I had written down 25. Okay.
69 and 15, right?
So I, I think the condition that I would suggest, or the set of conditions that I would suggest, would be the parking spaces, so the 15 actual parking spaces, the 15 employee parking spaces, and this doesn't even need to be a condition, they have to be designated, and they have to comply, they have to be 9 by 18 and comply with our requirements, and the 24-foot drive aisle has to be maintained. The vehicle storage area, I think the condition I would suggest for that is that no vehicles are to be kept or stored or parked outside the vehicle storage area, other than employee parking approved for employees.
I'm sorry, I don't quite understand that, what you were saying about the, the storage cars?
So basically, within that rectangle, you could store whatever vehicles you can reasonably fit in there. You don't have to have the full 9 by 18 spaces, but you have to keep it in that, in that designated rectangle.
Sure, of course. So if there's 15 employee, you know, of the 9 by 18s, there's about 24 employees today. Sometimes it shrinks down to about 20, sometimes it can go up to 26. And remember, we, we still have a lot of room that we're not, that we're not even talking about here, that employees are parking today in the back of the building. They were overflowing. We understand there was a problem on North Street. We've taken care of that. I've addressed that with the employees. But, you know, 15, we, we have plenty of par, if, if we were to get approved for this, the 15 is very generous. It's fine. It's, it's plenty. It gives us plenty. It'll be fine. We could park, the other employees can park on the existing parking lot, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other commission members with questions for the applicant? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, we, we mentioned the zoning violations from, from last month, and I, and I think this plan basically clears up those violations, which were really just parking off-site. Were there any other things we had to, I think that that was it, but I just wanted to check.
The, the primary concern is that, or was that the, so for the variance, this site has to be associated with an approved Dealers and Repairs, and it's associated with Wallingford Auto Park. And we have had an issue, sort of, we had a zoning violation issue, the over, or sort of the underlying issue is that there's an existing site plan that wasn't being complied with. The biggest concerns that were sort of born out of that were that there was, right, the parking on North Street, some of the curb cuts were being blocked up. I know that those in the back are now open. The site isn't laid out right now exactly according to the approved plan, but the number of vehicles has been, they, they did a lot of work out there. So the number of vehicles has been significantly reduced. They just parked them in a slightly different direction.
One of, one of the other steps my client has taken in recent years, because this issue has been reoccurring, is he, you know, leased some other property down the street, down up by Walmart. So he was able to remove and get some, get some vehicles down there.
Yes, I could add that we've also, since the last meeting, believe it or not, we've reduced total inventory by 40 cars, to really shrink it, hoping that we can get approved and maybe rebuild again. But right now, we're pretty shrunk. If you were to drive by there tonight, it's, the backyard is empty. So we did reduce by 40 in preparation, obviously. There were some concerns in the driveway. And I, in the future, also, I'm looking into, spoke with Casey about this, there's three curb cuts on North Street. I don't want to make that part of what we're talking about today, but I want to let you know that I'll be responsible. I'm going to be speaking with Cole, maybe in the spring, or maybe during the winter, and maybe look at, you know, cutting that second one out of three, where it could actually be to our advantage and also satisfy the town and the people by closing in one of those wide curb cuts that exist today. We could actually park more cars, because right now, we're not parking cars there. So it, it'll help both of us by actually getting rid of that.
Yeah, yep. I would just also suggest that before you rebuild inventory there, because there, I mean, we've talked about this, there's an existing site plan that doesn't really work for you. So if you intend on adding more inventory, I, you would need to address, let's address the site issue in the front before that happens, so we don't end up back in the same position.
The entire 485, meaning the front and, North Street and North Colony, the entire?
Yeah, because your site, I mean, that was kind of what I think is the, the primary issue, I think, in terms of the design, is towards the back, right?
Absolutely, yes. I agree. I saw an issue.
Yeah. So you probably don't need to modify the front that much. I mean, that's what you could talk to the engineer about, but we'd come back with a modified site plan with something that works a little better for you and still complies with the zoning regs.
Yeah, I think it'll benefit both of us. Thank you. Good. Other commission members?
Yeah, Mr. Allenson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I just have a couple of quick questions. The access on the street side on the back of the lots, you said it's not going to be open to the public. How are you going to do that?
Should I answer? It's just, it's a, it's a.
I'm not sure if you gave us your name and address.
I'm sorry.
John Gargano.
45 North Colony Road in Wallingford.
Thank you.
So the back of the, the building now, you can't see that street right now. It would be built, a, a drive, a driveway would be built there. So it just has access to bring the cars in and out. I don't think that there, there would be any people pulling into that area or doing anything, other than employees.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood. I thought there was going to be a restriction on an ingress or egress from the back there.
Yeah, it's not intended to be open to the public. We could have him put up a sign that says employees only. It's, it's, it's actually probably when you're driving down North Street, because of the change in elevation, and it's not going to have a Wallingford Auto sign or anything. It's, it's not going to be very obvious, I think, that it's connected to the dealership, so I don't think you'd have members of the public pulling in. But we could certainly have him put a sign. I don't know if it's one depicted on here, but we could certainly have him put a sign up that says employees only.
Sorry, I misunderstood. The other question I had was just, because I'm bad at hearing, the Barberino side, the fencing, you said the fencing wasn't going to go on the Barberino side because, and that's where I blanked out.
Oh, there, there's already a fence there. We, we weren't proposing a new fence because there's already a fence there.
Thank you. And then, just not to beat a dead horse, is what we say when we're about to do it. We've got 15 spaces for employees. We've got 26 employees. We're told that there's plenty of spaces. Doing the math, that leaves us with 11. There's plenty of space for 11 cars to be parked behind the building or elsewhere?
There's space right now for about 60 cars, and part of that problem was the overflow when the cars would come in, and, you know, the lot would bulge and cause problems for everyone. So with changing this, it'll allow plenty of room for employees to park in the existing area.
Thank you.
So this would be almost an overflow for employees, where if they chose, you know, ones that can walk freely to their cars, or can walk further than someone, they would maybe choose to park there.
Thank you.
Thanks. Just, I have just one or two just very brief comments. And again, it just goes toward parking. I, I know the, you know, the photos you showed us, and your memo said that they're in compliance, and they moved all the cars out of the, the drive. I mean, you're still, your, your drive coming in at Main Drive, you still have, you know, one car on one side of the driveway, another car on the other side of the driveway. It's in the driveway. Just encourage you, or would want you to move those cars out and not have, I mean, that's the one picture.
Talking about the main entrance?
Yeah, the main entrance.
Originally, it was actually designed to showcase a car to the left and to the right, and there's a stop sign there. And there's actually a yellow, I think a yellow or a white line, and there was a traffic control thing.
Was that approved on the plans, the original approval, Casey? Having those two cars in the, essentially, almost, it's like they're in the driveway.
Yeah, they've been there for.
There, I mean, I can bring it up for you to look at. I don't see any designated spaces within the driveway. There's some spaces, display spaces, sort of adjacent to the driveway, but not, not actually in it on the plan.
Again, when I'm looking at it, it looks like there's two cars in the, in the driveway. When I drove by it, you know, today, it seemed like they're on the other, you know, on either side of, of the driveway, the entrance and the exit. So I guess I would encourage you to, to move those out. You know, I, I think that, you know, what we're trying to do is have people comply to their, you know, comply to their plans, especially, you know, we have a lot of auto dealers on, you know, on, on Colony Road, and, you know, we've had some issues with some, and, you know, through planning department encouraging them to, to adhere to their site plan. I know you're, you probably noticed with, just your neighbor with Barberino, you know, he used to have his cars right on the road, and now, again, they were moved back to comply with his plan. So I would just encourage you in those two areas, just to, or in that area, just to comply with the plan and what was approved, and, and have, at least in my mind, a little better access in and out of that driveway.
Is that something that maybe in the future, when we do redo that site plan, if cars can, can we, if we showed that on a new plan, maybe come over and show, whether it be a six months or a year from now, whatever it may be, when, when we talk about that curb cut on North Street, if it works, and if it, if it's feasible to keep those two cars there on the left and the right?
Well, that's something that the commission could always look at. Again, you know, an applicant presents a plan, the commission looks at it to see, and, and make, makes comments on it to see if it, again, if it makes sense or doesn't make sense. So.
Sure.
I wouldn't say don't do that.
Okay.
It's, it's up to you, but I wouldn't say that, you know, it's a proverbial slam dunk. But again, that's, that's certainly your option.
Okay, thank you.
Any members from the public who'd like to speak on the application? Seeing none, Casey, any final comments that you may have?
No, other than there was, I had comments that were submitted into the record last time, and there was a response, including a $9,000 S and E bond that I'd like added as conditions of approval.
Okay. And does the applicant like to make any final comments for the application?
No, thank you.
Okay. At this point in time, seeing that there's no other commission members like to comment on the application, I entertain a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Gargano Limited Partnership to construct a vehicle storage area and associated improvements in association with an approved motor vehicle dealers' repairs license at 9 and 11 First Street, and on the unaccepted right-of-way known as First Street, as shown on plans entitled Parking Lot Expansion, Number 9 and 11 First Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, dated June 8th, 2016, revised to July 31st, 2017, subject to the following conditions. Number one, all site plan elements in association with First Street, as shown on final plans, as well as maintenance, are, are to be sole responsibility of the owner of Number 9 and 11 First Street. Number two, any employee parking in the subject lots must be actual, accessible, and zoning compliant parking spaces, as discussed at this meeting. Number three, comments of the Town of Wallingford Town Planner, dated 8/31/17. Number four, applicant shall be required to post a $9,000 S and E bond, as recommended by the Town Planner. Number five, comments of the Town of Wallingford Environmental Planner, dated 8/30/17. And number six, the parking spaces for 15 employees must be designated and comply with town regulations, and the 24-foot drive aisle must be maintained, as discussed at this meeting. And number seven, and final, no vehicles are to be kept or stored outside the vehicle storage area.
We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, it moves us on to our new business item, item number five. It's a site plan for a 401-foot square foot accessory apartment for Jay Hernandez at 578 North Elm Street. Again, if the applicant would please come forward to begin preparing for his presentation. And Mr. Cohen, would you please note all correspondence for the record?
Yes, I have comments from the fire marshal dated September 11th, 2017. I have comments from Eric Kruger, senior engineer to Casey Costello, dated September 27th, 2017. And I have a letter from Casey to Joel Hernandez, dated September 25th, 2017.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. If the applicant would please introduce himself and begin his presentation.
Good evening. My name is Gene Luternal, Durham Road.
Good evening, Joel Hernandez, 578 North Elm Street.
So Mr. Hernandez is my son-in-law, married to my daughter, and three children in the home. What this is, is basically an in-law setup for his parents. Again, like I talked about earlier, age and place. The base, this is a basement area with a walkout basement. There's, I don't know if they got pictures. Did they see picture? Okay. So it's a finished room presently. It was set up, it was this way when they purchased the home. presently. It was set up, it was this way when they purchased the home, a little over two years ago. And it was, it had a bar area set up in it, so it had water and a sink in it. Proposal is to take that bar area and create a little kitchen setup and add a bathroom area to it. Couple of the wa, three of the walls would stay existing with the wood finish that's presently there. So it's a slight, slight modification, basically adding a bedroom, I mean, a bathroom to it.
Bathroom?
Yes. Yeah, it presently is a three means of egress, one going out the back to a slider, level ground, another one through the laundry area, and a third for, last resort, would be go up the stairs to the first floor.
Good. Thank you. Any commission members have any questions for the applicant? Casey, based on your comments, you don't, you had no comments? With that, we have no one in the audience, so we won't go to them. At this point in time, I'd entertain a, a motion on the application.
Mr. Chairman, I move the commission to approve a site plan for Hernandez for a 401 square foot accessory apartment at 578 North Elm Street, as shown on a floor plan sketch entitled 578 North Elm Street, subject to two conditions, comments of the Town of Wallingford Senior Engineer from Water and Sewer dated 9/27/17. And number two, final inspection by the Town of Wallingford Zoning Enforcement Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzsimmons. We have a motion on the application. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Cohen, voting beginning with Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
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 And yes, application's been approved. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Casey, if you'd like to continue with our, with our agenda going into the bond releases and reductions, if we have any.
Sure. Okay. Bond releases and reductions, 48 Jones Road is not ready for release, 14 Fairfield Boulevard is ready for release.
All right. I'll entertain a motion for release of the bond on 14 Fairfield Boulevard, as recommended by our Town Planner.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we remove the bond from, what was the address?
14 Fairfield.
14 Fairfield. 14 Fairfield Boulevard, as recommended by the Town Planner.
We have a motion to release the bond. And do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzsimmons. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? And it brings us to our number nine, which we continually defer to our next meeting, election of officers.
We've almost made it a whole year. We're getting there.
All right, Casey, if you'd just please close out the agenda for its place.
Administrative approvals, there are several. I'll just leave it to you if you have any questions about anything specific, since you've seen them all. Some of these are, oh no, I guess these weren't listed on there, but we, we have had a few survey waivers too and I think that process is working well as an administrative process.
Anyone with any questions on administrative approvals? Seeing none, Casey continues.
Okay, for the September meeting of the Zoning Board of Appeals, there was a garage approved, a special exception for garage space, and then a porch setback, nothing of big note. The variance that I brought up at the last, the variance application that I brought up at the last meeting has been continued. So that's, I did issue a comment on behalf of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and there has been some further discussion with the applicant in terms of trying to, I guess, look at what their different options are. But that is still an open application.
Okay.
And will be continued on Monday. And then we have a new variance. This is for an addition. It does involve several variances, but this is for an addition on Two Carter Trail. Questions?
Anyone have any questions on variances?
Okay, zoning violations, zoning enforcement, any questions on that one? Comments?
I don't believe so.
Then the only other thing I will note is, well, I guess two things related. You do not have any receipts for next month, so the only thing that's currently on your agenda is the Paradise Hills application, since that didn't go forward tonight. And we also discussed the possibility of scheduling another workshop to further discuss the town center zoning regulations. It's up to you, but you still may want to do that as a separate meeting, just so that we can kind of concentrate on that. But you do only have one item next month.
I guess I would, unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to be at our November meeting. I'll be out of town on business. So I would like to, you know, take part in that discussion. So I don't think, at least in my mind, I wouldn't like to see that, you know, discussed at our regular meeting. But if you would, Casey, if you could send out one of those survey requests with, you know, with various dates, so we can kind of keep the momentum going on our, you know, looking at our downtown or our town center area as far as those regulations.
Did the last week in October, maybe the second to last week and the last week in October, is that generally a decent timeframe? It's only a couple of weeks away.
The second of the last week, well, why don't you, if you, because there's several other members that are not here this evening.
Yeah, okay.
If you, you know, put those, put those weeks out there.
Okay.
And, and then we can see what, what meets everybody's schedule.
Yeah, okay.
What best meets everybody's schedule.
Okay.
Well, seeing that we have no other business before us, I'd entertain a motion. Yes, Mr. Cohen?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to kind of give my trip report from the Regional Planning Commission last month, which I attended, which was very enlightening. There were three action items, and basically they're all zoning regulation changes or proposed to certain towns. Town of Orange had one where they wanted to change hotel development in a light industrial district. Town of Handen had one where they wanted to determine the location of affordable units in a multifamily housing development. And Derby had an interesting one where they wanted to establish educational dormitory, dormitory residents in our three zones. So we reviewed all the proposed zoning regulation changes and, you know, the commission approved them. You know, again, being my first one, I don't know what would have happened if we denied it, but, you know, I'll learn as I go. And tomorrow, I will attend. They're going to be talking about the Regional Plan of Conservation and Development. McMillan and McBroom will, Malone will be presenting that, so that'd be interesting. And the pizza is really good. So.
We'll make sure they keep on having it, keep on going. Thank you, Mr. Cohen. I appreciate that, that report from you. And also, I appreciate you attending those meetings. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, word adjourned. Have a good evening. Thank you very much.